Welcome and thank you for tuning in to this CAT TV Bennington Select Board Candidate Forum. My name is Dave LeChance, I'm one of your moderators tonight.
And I'm Michelle Morocco, I'm your second moderator tonight.
And we have four candidates for the Select Board with us tonight. In alphabetical order, they are Jean Conner, Jeannie Jenkins, Bruce Lee Clark, and Bill Scully. This is a forum, it's not a debate, so what we are doing here tonight is we're going to give each candidate the opportunity to respond to specific questions, and each candidate will have the same amount of time to respond to the question. We're not going to have any follow-up questions, there will be no rebuttals, there won't be any discourse between the candidates. Each candidate will answer the question in the time that's allowed, which is three minutes, for each. Because we're not going to have any rebuttals, no candidate will reference another candidate during their response. We want to hear answers to the questions. We are going to alternate asking questions of the candidates, so that each has the opportunity to answer first, or second, third, and fourth, and so on. So the first question will go to the first candidate, second question we'll start with the second, and work our way back to the first, so that each has the same opportunity to answer first, the same number of times. And I think that's pretty much the grand rules that we have here tonight. We thank all four candidates for being with us tonight and joining us, we thank CAT TV for sponsoring this. And let's go to our first question.
Great, so Jean, we're going to ask you to start, and the question is, just tell us about yourself and why you're running for Select Board.
Okay. My name's Jean Conner, and thank you all for whoever's responsible for making this happen, I do appreciate it. Geez, tell you about myself, I won't go back to the very beginning, I'll just start with when we moved to Bennington, which was in 1989. We've lived here since then, this is our second home, I have two children, they both went through the public school system here, my husband is a watercolorist. I definitely have always felt that giving back to your community is part of your responsibility, and I took that very seriously, and jumped right in when we got here. I was on the Board of Bennington Project Independence, was on the Bennington School District Board for eight years, not consecutive, there was a break of a couple of years in between. I'm currently serving on the Shires Board, and jumped into the Select Board race three years ago with Jeannie Jenkins, and it's been an amazing experience, and I really am hoping to continue for another three years. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Jenkins. I moved here 30 years ago, and besides a brief stint working at the Bennington County Regional Commission as a solid waste planner, I've worked at the Community College of Vermont. And I have really enjoyed working at CCV, because I have gotten to meet people across a wide spectrum of backgrounds and interests, and it's been a way to really learn the community. As part of that work, I have done, I've gotten to work, do a lot of work in workforce and also in economic development. And I serve on several boards in that capacity, I co-chair the Workforce and Education Working Group. I sit on the Bennington County Industrial Corporation Board, and also the Regional Economic Development Board. In my early years here, I served on the Lake Perrin Board, which was a lot of fun, and we did a lot of great work in expanding what Lake Perrin offered, and the broad range of people that it served. And in recent years, following the 2012 community visits by the Vermont Council on Rural Development, yes, I joined the Poverty Working Group, and as a result of that, I co-founded a program called the Seedlings Program, which is a multi-year program for kids in poverty. Kids begin in first grade in the program, and stay with the program through their transition to middle school. And it's a school, it's a program really designed to help kids develop the skills that they need to be successful in life. Presently, I serve on the Select Board, it's my first term, and it has been an enriching and all-consuming experience, and I look forward to serving again. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bruce Lee Clark, and, let's see, who am I? I've been a United Methodist minister, I'm now retired, served churches in upstate New York and central New York. Decided to go to law school, and went to law school mid-career, became a legal services attorney, and ran a program in the midst of the AIDS epidemic to represent people with HIV and AIDS. And did that for several years, and then when my wife got a position here in Bennington as the minister at Second Congregational Church, we moved here in 95. They were worried about whether I would have anything to do here, and I told them they didn't need to worry about that, the church. And so, almost immediately was asked by the then-director of the CDC, the Career Development Center, if I would be interested in working on a new program that they had begun to develop, but the instructor was no longer available, and I said I would be willing to give that a try, and stayed teaching pre-law at the Career Development Center for 23 years, and just retired at the end of last June. It was in that year of preparation for retirement that a number of people came up to me and said, "So where are you going to move to?", because my wife and I were both retiring. And I said, "What do you mean, 'move to'?" And they said, "Well, you're certainly not going to stick around here", and I said, "Well, yeah, we are, we had already made that decision long ago." We happened to like Bennington, I thought I'd been teaching civics and pre-law and forensics for a number of years, and thought I ought to try to put some of my teaching into practice again. And was asked by a number of people if I would be willing to run for the Select Board, and I said, I gave it a lot of thought, and I thought that some of my skills and my inclinations would be helpful. So here I am.
I am Bill Scully. I moved here about 30 years ago from Southern California. Like Bugs Bunny, I think California is a great place to live, visit, but I wouldn't want to live there. I went to Bennington College, actually it took me 28 years to graduate from Bennington College, and during that period, I really fell in love with Bennington and the area, and started several businesses. I started through the 90s, I was working for various artists in the area. Then, and at night, I was working several jobs at the time, started working in food service, and probably most known initially for opening Pangaea, then went on to buy Powers and open Allegro, worked for Bennington, run Bennington College's dining services. And around 2008, I had one of those epiphanies that changes your life, and I decided to get involved in hydropower, and trying to change what I think is a deeply flawed energy policy in Vermont, and try to really reclaim Vermont's energy future. The culmination of those efforts after about eight years was the commissioning of the Vermont Tissue Plant, which was only the second plant in 35 years to come back online in Vermont. Since then, we recommissioned the panel plant, and I'm working on other projects. So that's pretty much what I'm doing now, I'm no longer doing food service, just developing energy projects, renewable energy projects around Vermont.
Thank you.
This question, we're going to begin with Jeannie. We're going to ask, what is something that you think Bennington has improved on in the past few years? What is something that you think Bennington has fallen behind on, and how can this be improved?
I think the thing that Bennington has improved upon in the last few years is really building the infrastructure for economic development in this community. I think the passage of the TIFF district, the Putnam Project beginning development. I think many, many places where we're seeing redevelopment in the downtown, such as the old garage being converted into a new reuse, and Leflambeau's being, becoming light manufacturing in downtown, the recruitment of new restaurants to our area to make it a little more diverse, and also really building an infrastructure in the downtown with parks and other events to make it a more vibrant and lively place. So I think we've done quite a bit to sort of lay that foundation. I also think the work that's been done to not only look at Bennington as an economic driver, but looking at the region, both across southern Vermont and north and south in the Shires, really has set a stage for us to be able to look at not only what we can do in Bennington, but also using the larger region as really a place where we can recruit both workers and recruit businesses, and have that work both ways for us. I also think we've done, so this is on the upside, I also think we've done quite a bit in encouraging an entrepreneurial ecosystem in this community, and I think that's everything from creation of Lightning Jar to Startup 802, which is a program to help people who think they might want to start a business really play that out and network with others in that same situation. I think we've done quite a bit in that area. I think the place where we have not, oh, where we've not fulfilled our potential, and I'm hoping that that is about to change, is really in the area of youth recreational opportunities, and really building something for families that make this a community where you feel like, regardless of your age or ability, there's something out there for you. So, you know, that, I think we're on the cutting, we're right on the edge of seeing that change.
Well, in terms of improved on, I think that Jeannie has mentioned a number of the projects that I think are on the edge, maybe going to be developed, we're hoping that they will be. I think that just the way in which we're attracting some change in some of the downtown merchants, and thinking about welcoming people into the town, I think that has improved. I think the look of the town actually has improved over the last number of years. So I'm feeling pretty decent about that, and I think that holds some benefit, benefit for the people of Bennington. I also think that the emphasis that has been on the development or the redevelopment of parks and recreation, and the focus that has come into the recreation area is something that I think is a positive move, and I'm going to hope for some more additional positive moves in that area, particularly as they relate to programming for kids, for youth, for older adults, and for the rest of us. Although I might be an older adult, who knows. Fallen behind, I'm, let me put it this way, a couple of places. We're still thinking about whole groups of people as non-engaged in Bennington's economic and civic life. I've worked as a volunteer and as a board member at the Greater Bennington Interfaith Community Services, and we run the Free Clinic and Kitchen Cupboard, and the World Health Coalition, and the Emergency Food and Fuel Fund, and there is not a diminution of the number of people in poverty. And, you know, that's an intractable issue, but it is one that I think is still critical for Bennington, to get everybody involved. And I would say the second part is, I am, in at least the conversations that I've had around town, there still seems to be confusion, a great deal of confusion, or perhaps even non-interest among some parties, about the work of the Select Board. So the Select Board hasn't really communicated well what it needs to be doing, and what is its job, and what is the job of the town manager. And so I think that kind of interpretation, which can lead to greater participation, I think we can do a substantial better job on that. Thank you.
Well, I think, I think we've gotten a lot better at working together, and I think we can probably attribute that to a lot of people, but also a lot of institutions. I think we've seen, you know, SVC, we've seen the hospital, and we've seen Bennington College really kind of engage with the community on a level that I haven't seen before, and as a united front, and we've kind of had the Putnam Project, which is now a public-private partnership, where you have people from the town working toward an objective with private institutions, with private citizens, and all working collectively to make Bennington a better place to live. So I would say that working together collaboratively towards a common goal is an exceptionally good move forward over the past couple of years. What are we behind on, it's always easy to point fingers. I would say that if I could think of one thing, I would like to see a more clear mission statement on where we're heading, something that can inform the decisions that are being made. If somebody were to ask me, "Do we want to exercise a local option tax?", what are we doing with it? Are we going to try to develop a downtown that is strictly retail-based? Or are we going to try to develop a middle-class that then bolsters that downtown activity? Because the answer to the question of, "Do we want to exercise that tax?", is different for each of those. It's a yes in one case and a no in the other. I don't want to tax the people from Bennington, but I do want to tax tourists if that's all we're going to draw in. So for me, I'm looking for a mission statement. I'm not something that's written in stone, something that can be dynamic and changing, but something that makes it clear what we're trying to do, and what we think we want for Bennington as a community.
Thank you, Bill. So... Oh, so sorry.
Oh, that's fine.
Skipping you entirely.
That's just fine.
When I thought of what we've improved on, the first thing that came to mind was the arts culture in Bennington. I've noticed there seems to be an uptick in things to do as related to the arts. I've spent way more time in Old Castle, in the seats, in the theater, in the past couple of years than I had in the past. The performances are amazing, they're of such high quality, and it's affordable. You can go on Wednesday nights, and it's buy one, get one free, half price, I can't remember, but I think Old Castle is a treasure. We have the Bennington Museum, you know, the exhibitions are just amazing, and it's right up the street, and it's, membership is very reasonably priced, and there's something there for everyone. I'm headed to a music performance right after this, there's a Celtic concert at the UU Hall. There's just so much to do around here that's related to the arts. And I often go to the high school to see the performances, so, you know, you don't need to go see high-quality, expensive things, or spend a lot of money to see great art. It's around us, and it's affordable for everyone, and when it's the kids doing it, it's just wonderful. When I think of things, oh, and the other thing I wanted to mention is the Bats Trail system, and the much more pedestrian-friendly ways to get from point A to point B, and I know it's still a work in progress, but there's such tremendous work being done on the Bats Trail system, and making our sidewalks and our streets much more pedestrian-friendly, which is really a wonderful thing. I feel like where we have possibly fallen behind, and I agree with Bill, I don't mean to point fingers and to criticize, because far be it for me to criticize anyone. I feel like the downtown with so many empty stores, and part of it, I realize, is it has to do with the Putnam redevelopment project, and people have moved out because of that, and that is part of it. But it's, we possibly were a little bit behind watching retail kind of dry up, and maybe we could have been a little bit ahead of the curve, expecting that to happen. And I know there's a lot of work being done on a daily basis from many different people, so I just want to say I don't mean to criticize. I also think the opioid crisis has had a devastating effect on families, on people, and the community, and I wonder if we could have been a little more proactive on that front as well. Not preventing it, but possibly just preventing it as serious as it has gotten. I don't know the answer to that, and there's always room for improvement, so those are the two things that came to mind. Thank you.
All right, so Bruce, we're going to start with you on this one. I'm wondering, what are one or two of the biggest issues you see that Bennington is currently facing? And as a Select Board member, what power do you have to address those issues?
Sure. I just spent an hour or so with a local businessman today, was talking about some of this, and we were chatting together. I think part of it has to do with a continuing loss of trust in the local government. And I'm not exactly sure I know where this is all coming from. This particular businessman is relatively new in town, and was very much assisted by a number of people, but mostly not from the town. There were some town folks who were involved, and that was good. But I think when I talk to students, or when I talk to just folks on the street, or when I talk to folks who happen to be coming out of the Kitchen Cupboard, or wherever, there doesn't appear still to be a positive sense of the town government. And I'm worried about that, and I think one of our tasks if we're on the Select Board, and one of the things we have power over is how we are perceived, how we are seen. So how we model the kind of welcoming that we would expect others to show when new people come into town. And we see that, I think it's just irregular, and I would love to regularize that, in a way, to sort of change the way, I was told once, "Well, you know, we're just not wired to be that way", and I want to say, "Then we need to rewire ourselves", we need to, and we have the power to do that. We have the power to become more welcoming, it seems to me. So, that's one thing. I think also, I would say, the, again, to me, there's this, when I talked to students, when I was talking to students, and now when I see these students have grown up, and many of them are still here, they're underemployed. They're employed in jobs that don't really provide them everything that they need to sustain a family. They're not sustaining, they don't see this as a, their job currently as a career. They have something, but it's just not completely where they need to be. I think we can do more in that area by working at assisting the town in recruiting businesses that provide, and, you know, I think we're beginning this process, but provide more of a sustainable lifestyle, and for a wage that is a living wage.
Wow. So, if I understand the question, do you want to know what I think are the two biggest issues that we're facing? Is that correct? That's a hard one. So why don't I go after the biggest issues for which I see a possible solution? I think right now, I would look at pride and infrastructure, if I was to put a name to it, and two names to it, really. I think that it feeds into a little bit of what was just said, that we need to trust each other, we need to work together, we need to be proud of what we're doing, we need to, we don't always have to agree, in fact, there's probably a lot of merit in disagreeing, but we need to begin to all want better for Bennington, and to work toward that, and to be proud of where we are and who we live. I love where I live, and I wish everyone felt that way, and I really don't think that's the case. I don't know if that's ever going to be the case, but I think we can start to work toward that by having a little bit more transparency, we've talked about that in other forums in government, in the Select Board, by having strong leadership on the Select Board, which carries through to the town manager, and the assistant town manager, and everyone else, and to start to work toward our common goals. As far as infrastructure, I have a lot of thoughts on that, obviously that's my wheelhouse, so I think that I see a lot of ways, I've had some ideas recently about things that I would recommend. I would really like to see people who don't have the means that the, you know, the, kind of the predatory solar projects have, have access through a revolving loan program with the town to be able to put a Tesla wall and a solar panel on their house, so that suddenly they have access to all those things that wealthy people have, really at little or no cost to the town. Doing rooftop solar, something that's not really controversial at all, and suddenly you have people of low to middle income able to see those tax benefits that other people don't see, able to save money, able to actually make money, able to get through power outages without actually losing power, able to address the thing that I like the most, which is dealing with climate change. But everyone able to contribute in their own way, without really having to bend over backward, and I think that it's the town's job to help prop people up, and I think that there are ways that we can do that, that don't really raise the taxes, that don't make it cost more, that just help allow the town to facilitate people really realizing they're Bennington. Thank you.
I'm going to attack this a little bit differently. The question was issues, what issues I would want to support as a Select Board member, correct? I've been thinking a lot about this. I think when things aren't going swimmingly, human nature is you want to blame someone, and you want someone to fix it, and often it's the Select Board that's expected to carry the blame and fix it. And quite often, it's not within the Select Board's power to do those sorts of things, but what is in our power is to listen and support organizations, institutions, that do have the ability and the power to affect change. I don't mean to be passing the buck, we certainly need to be engaged and willing to listen, but there's really very defined areas where the Select Board can actually exert power. We all would like to fix everything today, I understand that, but it's sometimes not possible. And it's also extremely difficult, but mostly it's sometimes impossible. And I'm going to cite one example that comes to mind when I think about supporting an institution in town, and that's the school system. We are completely separate, the budgets don't co-mingle, it's a completely different board system. There really is nothing that binds us together, other than we're all deeply committed to this community, and we all need to be rowing in the same direction. So, out of that, thanks to Sean Marie Oler, there was a relationship that was developed several years ago where the Select Board, not the whole board, but, you know, representatives, not a quorum, only can be three, meets with members of the school district on a monthly basis, where we exchange ideas and talk about what's going on. That's the kind of, that's the kind of support and relationship that I envision on how to solve the town's problems. It's not doing it ourselves, it's by working with all the other agencies and institutions together. Thank you.
Well, the lovely thing about being fourth on an issue like this is that you're sort of, "Well, this, no, that", so, and, so, I think the two large buckets where we could have, where we do have influence, and should continue to have influence, are first, we need to be a family-friendly, welcoming community. And I think this echoes some of the things that have already been said, but having a sense that everyone that comes into this community, we're happy to see them, we don't distinguish between those that have been here 10 years and 500 years, and we see, we see value and promise and opportunity in everyone that is in this community. And, you know, sometimes what we see is that we welcome new people more than we welcome people that have lived here for a long time, and sometimes it's the reverse. But I think it's something that as a community, we need to, we need to have opportunities to like each other and to spend time with each other, and I do think things like building the downtown into what it will need to become to maintain, which is sort of a vibrant, experiential place, where, you know, where people meet and do things together, that those kinds of things are helpful. So, you know, I also think childcare is not something the Select Board can help with, but certainly recreation, cultural events, and gathering places are specifically the things that we can do. I think my second, my second topic, which also is probably too broad, is thinking about where in the issue of poverty we can have influence, because it is a huge issue in this community, and almost everything we do touches on the issue of poverty in this community. I will say, while we cannot, the school system is separate, there are places where we overlap, and, you know, things like building after-school programs that use town resources and use school resources are places where we can do that. In terms of energy, there was a very big project that I was involved in, where we did ask, where we did try and find ways for low-income families to buy into solar... did ask, where we did try and find ways for low-income families to buy into solar arrays, and that is still something I'm really, really interested in seeing happening. And then last, economic development is clearly the place, economic development and just continuing education is the place where we can make huge impact in the issue of poverty. My time is up.
Thank you. All right. Bill, we start with you this time, Bill? Between last year and early this year, Bennington has lost multiple businesses, including Friendly's, Armstrong Jewelers, the Brown Cow Cafe in Bennington Station, Payless Shoe Store and Dollar Tree are going to close as well. What can the Board do to quickly find new businesses to take their place, and what sort of businesses does Bennington need more of?
That's a good question. I think that the Board can and is working through the Bennington Downtown Alliance. I think that there are mechanisms for bringing people in. I think it's a difficult economy, and I think we've talked about this before, I think this group has talked about this before, because we are not in the downtown Bennington economy anymore, we're in the Amazon economy, and how do we address that? I think that that's going to take a lot of work by a lot of people and a lot of groups. I think it needs to involve the Chamber, I think it needs to involve dialogue and communication. I do see those businesses closing, and interestingly, not for one reason, which also doesn't mean that there's anything wrong. Businesses come and go, and I don't take the businesses leaving necessarily as being a sign of anything negative. I, you know, there was nothing in the Brown Cow for a while before the Brown Cow was there, I mean, in that location historically, going way back. So I looked at that as being a food service establishment, as being something new. I know it had been for a while, but before that, it was a gym or something like that. So it is a complicated question, and as somebody who started a dozen businesses, I look at that, and I think that it's a complicated question, and I don't know the answer, but I think that we need to involve all the groups and all the stakeholders, and try to figure out what Bennington needs, and what people are willing to spend money on here. A lot of that's going to be food service, but there are other things down here that matter, that people are going to spend money on, that are necessary services. So I would say that I think it's just, it has to do a lot with communication between the stakeholders.
I think these businesses, the fact that they've closed for different reasons is actually a little encouraging. You know, it's not that there's some horrible problem that's just wiping everything out. Every situation was different, so I think, I find that, although it's sad, it's a little encouraging. What I think we need, because Bennington is such a unique place, when we moved here, I thought, wow, this place is in a time warp, and now, I'm really happy we're in a time warp, because it's just such a civil place to live, it's such a lovely, the landscape is beautiful, it's the perfect size, we know each other, but we're not in each other's business too much. But I think the downtown and other locations, I think we need to really carve out a niche of kind of edgy boutique-like stores that are different, not big-box stores, but they need to be affordable. A lot of boutique-like stores are really, really expensive, and I don't think that's a good idea. And something really unique. I think we need a lot of restaurants, it seems to be that, that's really where people want to spend their money. They're really interested in going to have a meal, not necessarily expensive, but just really enjoy being with their fellow community members and having some good food. These things are going to take time, and we're going to have to be patient, but I really do think that Bennington needs to think outside the box, and I'm a proponent of looking at what other small communities have done, we're not alone. This is happening all over, especially in New England, but probably all across the country as well. I think we need to look at what has worked in other communities, rather than trying to reinvent the wheel. If stuff, if ideas have proven to be successful in other places, steal them. We can just do the same thing here, maybe tweak it a little bit to suit us a little bit closer. So, that's what I think. Thanks.
Hi. So I am a Board Member on the Bennington Downtown Alliance, and so this has been a topic of conversation for a large number of years, and there are a lot of best practices out there. You know, our town, like many towns, belong to Main Street associations, and this is the work of those associations. So, first of all, I mean, all downtowns across the country are reinventing themselves right now. The online shopping is completely our competition, and so what we can offer in a downtown is an experiential opportunity. So that does mean restaurants, one of the things we clearly need to do in Bennington is diversify our dining experiences, and that's everything from just different kinds of food to different ways of eating it, you know, having, I mean, the Food Truck Extravaganza was so fun, because it was something different for us, it was a different way of experiencing food. So we need to think about what kinds of food we bring in, and how we bring it in, we need to look at what other kinds of experiences. May Fest is a lovely, is a lovely thing to do, Fall of Palooza has been great, Food Truck Event is great, Brew Fest is great, anything that brings us downtown and gives us an opportunity to spend time with each other, I think is really helpful. I think we are, Bennington is so fortunate, because if you look at our downtown, despite the fact that we have so much online competition, you can still buy chocolates, homemade ravioli, I'm going to forget some, right? Maple syrup, books, you can buy coffee, you can go to restaurants, you can get your zippers repaired. I mean, we have such a range of things, you can buy insurance downtown, I mean, we are, you can buy toys downtown, how many downtowns have a toy store anymore? So, I think that while we are clearly reinventing ourselves right now, we are not the only ones doing it, and we have the, we have an advantage in that we still do have a really solid range of services that we offer in downtown.
Yeah, I would be in agreement, that particularly around the area of why all of these different businesses, they were all in different places, in terms of their reasoning for, reasons for closing. This is also one of those places, it seems to me, at least, where the, in terms of bringing in businesses, particular businesses, or trying to determine what does Bennington need, that I think the Select Board needs, and I suspect they would begin to feel, that there's only limited ability on the part of the Select Board to, because the number of players, and, you know, you've got building owners, you've got business owners, you've got any number of other stakeholders that are involved. So what can the Select Board do? The Select Board can bring together those stakeholders. And, yeah, it can be the Downtown Bennington Alliance, or the Bennington Downtown Alliance, or whichever group, and all of that. I would like to bring as many of those as possible. I actually don't think the Select Board should be in the business of trying to decide, what do we really need? I think that's the job of the entrepreneur. The entrepreneur should be out there, but we can be doing the kinds of, back in the day when the crazy Russian girls were getting started, there was a real move on the part of the town, to assist them in moving off of, from being just a cart, to being into one of the downtown businesses, and there was real assistance. And I think that kind of activity can take place, and should be taking place. The Select Board can set a kind of context within which that's the norm for us. So rather than trying to decide, gee, what do we need more of? Well, I will say, having gone out last Friday night, I can tell you what we could have used more as places for people to eat, because people were waiting in the wings everywhere. It was a vacation week, the beginning of the vacation week, the skiers were on their way up, and I was very fortunate, we had reservations. But, you know, there were any number of people, we could have, you know, Bennington could have fed a lot more people in that time. So food, yes, different kinds of food, sure, but I don't, I don't think government is in the best position to try to decide, what is it that we need? What is it that Bennington needs? I think we're in the best position, government is in the best position, to try to pave the way for whatever, whoever wants to come in and be the entrepreneur in this town.
Thank you.
Thanks. So this time, we're starting with Jean, correct? So what do you think is the role of the Select Board as a whole, and also individually as a Select Board Member, in establishing and building a culture in the community of Bennington?
Culture of?
Of building the culture of Bennington.
Building the culture, wow, okay. I guess first, we'd have to decide what that culture, agree on that. So I'm going to create what I hope the culture of Bennington could be, and that is a welcoming place for all kinds of people, a place where people are supported and encouraged, are educated, and can thrive. So what can the Select Board do to do that? I think we need to publicly embrace that, which I think we did, when we were at a meeting several weeks ago, and there was a statement read about inclusiveness and coming out against hate speech and racism. To me, that's like the foundation of what we need to be fighting against as a Select Board. I think we all, you know, imperative that we're all in agreement on that, so to me, that's the starting place. I would, I would like there to be family-friendly activities where families can meet with other families, and children can get to know other children, and there's, I don't like people being divided, we're very segregated, not even intentionally, but I'd like to see those barriers broken down, and we all live here together, we're all each other's neighbors, we see each other in the grocery store and in the post office, and I long for that. I find people of, that are different than me incredibly interesting, and we can all learn from each other. So any way the Select Board can facilitate that, which I think the Y, or the Rec Center slash Y, whatever we're calling it, is a great way that we could possibly do that. I know that's happening there now. There's people from all over the community, in every socioeconomic strata that comes together at the Rec Center, you're all there for the same reason, and it's an experience that really can bring us together. So I'd like to see initiatives like that be implemented over and over and over again.
So, Michelle, is the role of the Select Board in setting the culture, is that what you, what you said?
Yep.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think that's a nice way of asking, how do they set the vision for the community, in a sense, I think, I think. And what I would say to that is that we do that every five years, when we look at the town plan. So our town plan lays out what we see as the important values, what we value, what our vision is, and how we want to relate to one another. And I think that that, I think that's really important, and I do think it sets the tone for everything, from how we lay out our downtown, to where we build new houses, to what we care about in terms of renewable energy, in terms of how we see, what importance we place on pedestrian right-of-ways, or bike paths, what we feel is important in setting aside green space for parks, or for nature preserves. I mean, it is, I think our town plan is the way the Select Board makes that determination. And I think, you know, a couple weeks ago, when Donald read, I think, a really powerful statement about Bennington needing to become a more welcoming community, his, one of his four recommendations was, we should go back and look at the town plan, because we are silent on this issue in our town plan, and it is a place where we can be proactive and also show the vision that we have for how we want our community to go forward.
I think this is really the crux of where I see my desire to be on the Select Board, and it really does come down, and I may be reflecting more and more on my afternoon conversation, but, you know, I see both a role for the Select Board as a Select Board, and I also see a role for Select Board members as individuals, not because we can represent the Select Board, because we shouldn't, when we're as individuals, but we can model what we are looking for. And I too welcomed Donald's statement, Don Campbell's statement. I had been wondering how the Select Board could respond. I really do think that we need to be setting a more welcoming culture. We talk about being welcoming, and my problem is that I don't always see that. And so, I want to see how the Board can model, both as a group and as individuals, that welcoming style. And that certainly deals with the issue of race, and how we have been silent, and how we have, how, you know, are, the bias that we have, that others have experienced at our hands, that is maybe unconscious, and it's time to make it conscious, and I think the Board may be beginning to take some steps in that. But we also, the Board can do some of those things. The way in which it approaches the folks who come up and ask questions at, you know, when they're public comments, and how we address those. It is true that they may be asking us to do something that we can't do, but how we address them. Sometimes I get a sense that the folks who come up are not always feeling like they're being as heard as they need to be heard. And I'm not going to pin blame on anybody, I just think that's sort of the nature of that beast, and we need to do a better job at that. We need to have a sense of humility about what we can do, but we can do a whole lot more than what we have done, to shape the understanding of welcome, being welcoming to people of all races, people who are gay, the LGBTQ, yeah, LGBTQ community. We also need to refuse to be defensive when somebody calls us on something that we've done, and sometimes, we're really not very good at that. So modeling, it seems to me, is really important.
Good question. I'm not 100% sure I agree with the premise broadly. As a Board, I'm not sure that it's the Board's job to set the culture. I think it's the Board's job to make a safe environment for the culture to propagate, and to set the ground rules for that. I think, and other people have brought this up, I think that even looking at everything that happened recently with the Attorney General, all of that is a failure, but even that's not necessarily a failure on the part of the town, or even the agents of the town, that's actually a failure of state law, I think, more than anything. And I think that as a Board, if anything, looking at a specific instance, to try to give a specific example, the Board should be writing letters of support for the Ethnic Studies bill that's before the House now. I think I mentioned at the last forum that these issues are most insidious in our unconscious bias, and that bill goes right to the heart of that issue. And the way the town should address that as a municipality is for the Board to be trying to foster this bill that, you know, that was started by Kaye, and that's now being taken up and taken forth by others, along with a lot of other good bills this year. As an individual Board Member, I think my role, and, again, I'm not sure it's setting the culture, but I think my role is to be distinctive, and to represent my constituents as best I understand their needs, and to be sincere in who I am, and where, what my background is, and what I want for Bennington. Thank you.
Thanks.
So, I believe, Jeanne, we start with you this time?
Yes.
And the question is, are you satisfied with the level of civic engagement in town?
Thank you for asking. So civic engagement is something I worry about a lot, and I think, and I want to say, first of all, I'm really, really happy that we have had a community survey for two rounds now, so we did two years ago, and it just came out, and you have it had in the paper today. I think- I think that, um, what it pointed up, it pointed up a number of things. So first, a thousand people responded to it essentially, nine hundred and eighty-four, essentially a thousand people, which I guess is a pretty good turnout, um, but certainly not the number of people that I would have wanted to have responded. Um, and then second, um, I'll just, uh, in looking at how in that survey, people looked at the select board, I, I was, you know, I was unhappy that was a, a, a third, you know, thought select board was doing a lousy job, a third thought they were doing an okay job and a third had no idea. But more than that, there was 20% that didn't answer that question. And that was a much bigger number, much bigger number than for any other question. And so, you know, when I think about, okay, if somebody fills out a survey and the only piece they leave unanswered is, is the part on the select board, well, that, that says something about how we're engaging with the public. And so I think that, you know, I think it's a two-way street. I think I want, on the one hand, I think we really need, before we put the survey out again, to think about how can we best, um, change the way that we engage with the public so that they're not just coming, they're not just tuning in for select board meetings when they're mad, um, but they're watching and they're engaging and they're coming out and they're commenting and they're not being made fun of for getting up and commenting that it's a safe environment. And I don't mean the select board in that case, I mean, social media. Um, you know, but on the other hand, it's also got to be the public wanting to be engaged. And so if, it's a tough nut to crack. I do, um, I do think it's really important that we get voter, you know, number of people voting increase. I think it's important that we get the number of people who are engaging and in conversation. So as we move forward, they're part of the visioning process. So, thank you for asking. I care about it a lot.
Thank you. Well, I too care about it a lot. I, um, not only taught the pre-law program at the CDC, uh, but also we engaged our students in voter registration, uh, in those days. And also taught, uh, a civics course online through Vermont Virtual Learning Cooperative all over the state. And the, and the issues are, are all over. This is, I think civic engagement is a huge issue. And you would not necessarily think that in mostly small town in rural Vermont, that would be a problem. It's, it seemed to be, at least in my experience, to be endemic everywhere. I too was troubled with the numbers, uh, in the most recent, um, survey, not so much because it's an unscientific survey, but just the numbers of people who either, you know, didn't answer or couldn't say or, and I'm always troubled with, you know, I used to take my students, um, with me down to the polling place on, on voting day because most of them had never been. Um, and I wonder about that. I've, you know, other places, um, you know, their schools are closed on voting day. I'm not necessarily sure that that works. Um, on town meeting day, sometimes in other parts of Vermont, they're closed. I just think, we don't give people enough opportunities to really see how they can engage. And, and one of the things that I think can help, um, the town of Bennington is a greater sense of engagement. And so civic engagement, excuse me, isn't just within the governmental voting piece. It's also, uh, engaging with organizations, um, like the fire departments or like the Lions Club and Rotary and other kinds of organizations, voluntary organizations, um, that do good things in the community, that the community couldn't be what it is without. Um, and the numbers of persons willing to volunteer or to do that kind of work, I think are also declining. And I think that means that it's incumbent upon all of us to, to really work hard at finding ways to help get people engaged in those activities from a very young age. So can the select board do that? Yep, but so can everybody else? Can the teachers in, in the school system do that? I certainly hope so. I don't know whether select board members are asked to come and talk at people's, uh, classrooms, but I, I think everybody would be more than willing to do that when they could. I think that's one way to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Good question. Hard to answer because civic engagement, I, 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 volunteerism's a big part and I think I've said before that Bennington just absolutely excels in that. As far as government, I think the fact that there's four of us for three seats speaks volumes that there's, I think there should be seven of us. I think that the rooms at the town meeting should be full every time. I think there's a lot of people who are dissatisfied, some legitimately, and you know what? Decisions are made by people who show up. And I think people should be in the meeting, educating the select board on their concerns. The select board honestly can't track down every complaint that's on social media. Probably even 10% would be a massive accomplishment. So I would like to see people showing up to agree, to disagree, just to voice an opinion. If you think about it, whether you rent in this town or whether you own a house, what you pay in taxes is probably one of the more substantial investments you will make every year for the rest of your life. Can you imagine any other thing in your life you spend this amount of money on and you don't have an opinion? I think that people need to get out and express those opinions. And I think that it's problematic to attempt to govern when you don't know what people really want. I think it puts the select board in an awkward position. I think that there's a few people who we can rely on to say quite a lot. And I'm actually appreciative of that and I follow them on social media, but I don't capture anywhere near what I'd like to capture on social media. That needs to be brought to the attention of the select board. However, that is, via the town manager, whatever that is, it doesn't need to be in a meeting. You don't need to get in front of the camera necessarily. I think that an interesting thing happened. I was talking to Liz Coleman about this and somehow, I think it's my generation, we really kind of failed in our understanding of how an individual engages with government, uh, which is actually why Bennington College started, uh, Kappa, which was originally the Democracy Project, because I think, not to put words in Liz's mouth, but I think she felt as though she had gotten through education, educating a generation of people that didn't know how to engage in government. And I think that there's some truth in that. I think it's interesting to watch what the millennials are doing and I think the millennials are doing some pretty interesting things, uh, whether locally, but really I'm looking at nationally. And I think we'll see that trickle down to local. So the answer is, uh, I would like to see more on a governmental level as far as civic engagement. I'd like to see people really actually engage, more people engage more regularly. Thank you.
Um, I, I too am always kind of shocked at the low numbers of people who actually come out to vote each time. But more importantly, I'd like to dig into that a little bit and figure out why. What's keeping them away? Is it lack of, of knowledge? Um, are we not giving them enough information from which to make their decision? You know, I don't know what the answer is, but just looking at the number is really not going to solve anything. I think we need to figure out why. It's interesting, when Jeannie and I had our meet and greet a couple of weeks ago, we had three people who were brand new to the community come to our meet and greet. All three of them didn't understand, actually it was four, um, didn't understand the system of government that we have, the select board system. They didn't understand it. And I, and, and one of them said, you know, is there, is there a website? Is there some way I can, and I tried to give them, you know, the 30-second education on what the select board does, which wasn't really very helpful. So I, I think there's, they were newcomers to town and they didn't understand. And I think there's a large percentage of the citizens who have lived here a long time who also don't even understand how the system of government works. I certainly didn't, um, until I learned. So I think education is key on, on having people become engaged. They have to understand what it is they're engaging with. I also think that running for office is really ugly sometimes and you have to develop a thick enough skin, unfortunately, to be able to do this. And that's really, really unfortunate. I think there's a lot of people out there that would be willing to serve who are afraid to serve because they know there's going to be repercussions on their lives and their family's lives. And I think that's something I, I don't know how to address that I am not on social media and I'm actually happy to not be on social media. I was thinking, as, I don't remember who was speaking, about at the high school, my kids didn't participate in it, but there's something called the Model UN. We could have a Model Bennington and, and teach people on how this funky system of government actually works, um, even in the elementary schools, maybe. And I wanted to just share that the select board members are sometimes offered or, um, asked to present, um, to students. I participated in the sophomore summit a couple of years ago as a select board member. It wasn't anything to do with my profession. It was, why did I serve and what did it mean for me? Um, and that was a very gratifying experience. And the kids were actually, you know, they were really interested. So those are the things that came to mind, um, when you were talking about civic engagement.
Thank you.
Great. So this time, I believe we start with Bruce, right? If I'm not mistaken.
Yes, I think that's right.
I think so. Uh, all right. So what do you think is Bennington's strongest asset and how can we use it better?
Great question. It's hard to think about in terms of the strongest asset. I, I think, this is gonna sound like I'm, I'm contradicting myself and I don't think I am. I think in many ways, it's who we are as a town. Um, it's who we are as a community. And that shows itself in a number of ways. It shows itself in the number of people who do come out. I, I think about, um, a number of years ago, when the, when it was clear there were still a, a large number of people in the Bennington area who had no healthcare and had no access to it and were sometimes heading up to the emergency room. And a group of people got together and said, uh, along with a, a retiring doctor, and said, let's just start a free clinic. Let's hope we can put ourselves out of business real soon, but in the meantime, we'll get some stuff done. And nurses and doctors and carpenters and all kinds of other people, uh, volun, got together, volunteered, created an organization, uh, that would in fact, um, provide medical care for all kinds of people. And, and before we knew it, Southern Vermont Healthcare became involved because it was really good for them, for us not to, for us to take those folks who didn't need to go to the emergency room. Um, so that's the kind of spirit that I think is a huge asset. And it gets played out in a variety of different places, in a variety of different ways, uh, all around town. Now, if that's an asset, how can we use it better? And that is, I think that many of those experiences are very well-kept secrets. For some reason, we, whether it's we choose not to blow our own horn or, um, or for whatever reason, you know, whether it's in the arts or whether it's in social services or other kinds of activities, uh, we, you know, we don't tend to say too much about it. I think we actually need to, to raise up those experiences because that actually makes us all better. And no town can make it, um, based on just the government. It has to be, uh, these other civic organizations, these other agencies that come together to, so that's, that to me, it's the people and the volunteer spirit of those folks, uh, that make, uh, the biggest asset for Bennington.
Wow. That's a really hard question. I mean, between we, the people that live here, the rich history, the fantastic legislators, the hospital, the colleges that we have that are just top-notch, uh, looking at the infrastructure, uh, I don't know if people know this, but we have remarkable infrastructure in our water and sewer, uh, specifically in North Bennington, but also the libraries, all the things that were gifted by, uh, the park and the hall and the Scott and the McCullough family, things that no municipality could normally afford that were gifted to the village and we've managed to maintain. And I find, quite frankly, a little preposterous that we have them, uh, that we have the quality that we have. That being said, uh, I would have to go with the things that I know that are in my wheelhouse. I would say our natural resources in this area are by far our strongest asset and coincidentally, our most underutilized asset. As I said at the last forum, our natural resources represent $100 million a year in lost revenue that used to be captured downtown. And that's just if you're counting the water power, uh, which also we could tap into solar and other things like that. But of the money that we spend on energy in the Bennington area, two-thirds of that, $100 million a year leaves the Bennington area. That if we simply tapped into the natural resources, the reason this town was here in the first place and the very reason that Ver- Bennington and Vermont is part of New England, is part of those six New England states, were the core of why the United States became the leader at the end of the Second Industrial Revolution. I think we need to look at that. I think we've forgotten our own history in some regard and I think that we've forgotten our strongest asset. And I don't mean to discount the groups, the people, any of that stuff. I think it all matters. But I think that there's one that we've really neglected and I think that we're paying the price for that. And I think we're paying the price for that in the fact that we don't have a thriving middle class right now. Thank you.
Um, when I think about Bennington's strongest asset, again, I'm gonna start with the basics. I really think it has to do with, we happen to be located within the state of Vermont. Vermont has a really romantic appeal out there, um, and rightly so. It's beautiful where we live. It's, it's stunningly beautiful. Our geographical, geographic location, we're three hours from New York, we're three hours from Boston, it's easy to get here. I think those are assets that are just right in front of our faces. I think the people that live here are an amazing asset. I couldn't ask for a more giving community. When I was working, um, for two not-for-profits in town and soliciting auction items and donations, I don't think I can think of any time where someone said no. If they couldn't say yes for what I was asking, they would do their best to somehow give me what I needed or, or would give what they could. So our, our people here are just incredibly generous. Um, I think we have a really, uh, small-town culture that we have is disappearing. Um, we have our share of box, big-box stores, but for the most part, I still feel like Bennington is a really quintessential little, small, New England town. And I, I think it's becoming more and more unusual. I, I, I am a huge walker. Um, the walkability of our town is a huge asset for me and families pushing strollers, walking dogs. It just, it brings us together. There's people on their front porches. Um, I, and I, I think those of us, we've all lived here a long time, so I think you tend to start taking it for granted. Um, you forget what your assets really are and it takes someone new, whether it be a family member or someone coming to visit, and they're awestruck. You get to live here? I hear that all the time. In fact, um, my sister-in-law visited, I don't know how many years ago, and she lives in a part of the country where there's a lot of light pollution and she hadn't seen the stars in a very, very long time. And we were outside in my front yard or something and she looked up and she was like, oh my God, you can see the stars. And, sorry to end on such a small, schmaltzy note, but, um, I remember that and I remember how powerful that was for her and for me to hear, to remind me of being able to see the stars is an asset. You can't see the stars in every, all places.
Okay. Um...
It's hard to go last.
It is in this one. All right. So again, so, um, yeah, so I, I made my list, but I, I am also, I think I've made my piece with which one I'm gonna actually pursue. Um, uh, and so, but I have to go through my list first. Uh, we are both geographically well-situated and isolated and they're both assets. Uh, you can get to Montreal, Boston, Albany, New York without any, without a whole lot of trouble. Um, we're isolated enough that it makes us collaborative and we do work well together because we're in the Northwest Queendom, as it has been called. We have incredible cultural assets. And we have natural beauty. And I think, uh, for me, the natural beauty takes a slightly different turn. I do think it's something that we don't capitalize on as much as we can. We have, we have hiking trails, we have Prospect Mountain that's just been rejuvenated. We have farms. We have farms, we have through hikers who come here and we could, I mean, the Bennington Downtown Alliance ends up driving them to Walmart to get, you know, replacement pieces for their tents and getting them, you know, whatever they need. But we don't have, that's a catch-as-catch-can. There's a lot more we could do with that. We used to have loner bikes downtown for, through hikers that were coming and staying here. The landscape, just, you know, getting out and, and walking and enjoying being in a, in a meadow, or a field, or the woods, those are things, that kind of natural beauty is something that we, that, I don't want to make it an industry exactly, but I'd like to make it an industry. You know, I, I do think there's a lot we can do with it, and it is not, and, and it's an underutilized asset and resource that we have here. So if, if that, that would be a place that I would like to see us spend a lot more time and energy.
Thank you. Well, we've reached the point where we're going to ask you each to make your concluding statements, and you're each going to have, again, three minutes. And Bill, we're going to start with you.
So hopefully I won't need to hold three minutes. As I've said before, I made a decision to live here 30 years ago. I fell in love with this place immediately. I think within two weeks of being here, I knew I wanted to stay for a very long time. And somehow managed to invent a life here, and with my wife and with very little money, we worked really hard and we did well. And I don't know if, I don't feel in my gut as though those opportunities exist for people today, as in the abundance that they did when I got here. And I'd really like to live in a place where everybody's dreams can come true, no matter how crazy, they should have the opportunity to try. And I don't see that in the abundance that it was earlier now in Bennington, and I want to live in a place that has that opportunity. And I don't plan on moving to make that happen. So I, that's why I'm running for select board. I think in looking at what I want to do, I want to try to figure out what kind of economic model we need for Bennington. What is the correct path? Are we going to focus on tourism and retail marketing? Are we going to try to rebuild infrastructure that's already there and try to build a, you know, a stronger middle class? And I don't really know, I'm not the one to make that decision, but for me, that's, that's a fundamental point that I need in order, that I need answered in order to move forward. And again, I, as I said before, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel. We already own the wheel. We just need to put the wheels on the wagon here. I think that we need to demand a lot more transparency in our municipal spending. It saddens me that we don't have a policy for bidding, and I think that that would be one of the first things I would want to take on. I think in looking at one of the more contentious items, the Apple Hill Solar, again, I wasn't in the room, but I think we need to protect the community from predatory developments such as these solar projects. I did a little overview in the last forum about how really that only serves to benefit the 1%, and it also raises the rates for the taxpayer. I'd really like to see rooftop solar promoted in town and made accessible for people. And I think it's, I think that this democracy affords us the privilege of a non, in a non-violent way, overthrowing our government every few years. And I think that you need to think about this seven-person board, think about it like your fantasy football team. Who do you want to put on that team? I know that the Bennington and the North Bennington boards have an attorney on them not practicing, but you have a legal mind working on it, which I think is an asset. So who do we need to have on this board to make your goal for Bennington come true? I'm going to bring a skill set that I don't see represented anywhere. It's unique, and I think it would serve Bennington well. Thank you very much.
To you.
I for, please forgive me, I'm going to basically read what I read Monday night. So for those of you who heard it, you can go get a snack. Thank you again for whoever put this together. I'm often asked if it's fun to serve on the select board, and I usually say fun is really not the right word, but it's always interesting and it's been a very fulfilling experience. I actually enjoy the meetings, and I've only missed one in three years. I enjoy learning how municipalities run, and I've come to realize it's very, very complicated. I've already spoken a little bit about what I would like for Bennington, but I will say I want Bennington to be a thriving community with a vibrant downtown and good-paying jobs for all. I want a community where all of our kids are successful learners and reach their potential. I want our citizens to be safe and our roads, sidewalks, and bridges in the best of shape. I want to see people suffering from addiction, get the help they need, and be able to move forward with their lives. I want Bennington to be a compassionate and welcoming place for all people. I'm not a wizard, I don't have a wand, but if I did, that's what I would hope for for Bennington. I see nothing but potential in front of us. I'm, I'm very proud of the budgeting process that we went through this past winter. We spent about 10 hours at least in public meetings and countless hours privately in our own homes analyzing and reading through the documentation of the budgets from the various agencies. And I think we did, we did a really good job of pushing back where we could. We came up with some creative solutions. And through it all, I have to say, we had the taxpayers on our minds every single step of the way. People fail to realize that we're all taxpayers too, and if we're raising your taxes, we're also raising our own. So that's sort of the beauty of the process. In closing, I feel I've earned your vote based on my proven record of giving attention to the issues, my level of commitment, and my ability to listen. I'm ethical and a stickler for doing things right. I hold myself to a very high standard, and I take the responsibility of serving on the select board very seriously, and I give every vote I cast a lot of thought and consideration. The board has made some tough decisions over the last three years that were not always popular, but I guarantee they were made after much deliberation and analysis of the issue from all angles, and I will add probably some lost hours of sleep. I have no personal agenda for wanting to be on the select board, other than I, I really love serving my community. I believe it's critical as a select board member. I don't pretend to know everything. I don't think anyone does, but you can always count on me to listen, ask questions, and listen for the answers. So I hope I can count on your vote on March 5th, and you'll also vote for Jeannie Jenkins.
Thank you.
So I've lived in Bennington for 30 years. Our children grew up here. They graduated from MAU, and even though they're adults now, they still consider Bennington their home. It's a beautiful place to live, and like many small communities, we're in the process of reinvigorating our economy and reimagining who we want to be as a community. To create the vibrant town we want will require some real change. And as a town, we've already started that process. The Tiff District is really important in building the infrastructure for our downtown. Putnam Project is moving forward. In fact, we're seeing the first local hiring phase in just a couple of weeks. We've allocated funding to start a comprehensive marketing plan for Bennington, and we have new parks in the works to add vibrancy to our downtown. And all of this took enormous effort from a large number of people in our community. The three things that I think are most important for us to continue in the next few years, and these match up with things that are in the latest community survey, are expanding recreational opportunities that are both affordable and accessible for youth and families in Bennington. If we could do anything in the world to improve the rec center, what would it be? We have the opportunity this year by working with the YMCA to do a complete assessment of what we have and where it could take us. We should take advantage of that opportunity. We need to rethink and build on the ways our community uses the downtown. We are reinventing ourselves, we are in competition with online, and we do need to become more experiential as a community downtown. That's what makes a vibrant community these days. We've already started that process. We have parks in the works. We are looking for restaurants like crazy, and we are building, you know, quality events that bring in lots and lots of people from the surrounding areas and from pretty far away. We're also creating more economic opportunity in Bennington. We need to do this. We need to support business startups. We also need to support small business expansion. And we need to build the middle-income jobs that we don't currently have. We have lots of entry-level jobs, and we have some higher-end professional jobs that that middle range, which is where most beginning families and people coming out of college are wanting to settle, that, that is a much harder niche for us to fill. I think we're going to see some wonderful changes in Bennington over the next two years, and I very much want to be part in building this future. So please vote for me on March 5th, and please also vote for Jean Conner. Thank you.
I believe that I have the talents and gifts and can, that can help move this town forward, assist developing all of the town's assets, many of which you've heard about tonight, including its downtown and its natural resources. I think that my education and experience have taught me how to work well across all sorts of political and social divides, and how to process and develop policies and procedures that will assist this town in addressing its many issues, so that we're not always working in an ad hoc situation. I believe that we can do that. I'm someone who will work toward developing this kind of proactive approach to governing. I believe that policies do bring transparency, and, and there are policies that this town does not have or cannot find, and I think we can work on that together, so that we're not always reacting to events, but rather planning for growth. I'm someone, I think you will find, who will work with other members of the select board and other members of the community for greater openness and accountability and transparency. And may I say, especially a sense of hospitality in our town government, so that you as citizens will know not only what is happening in the town government, but why those actions were chosen to be taken. Communication within the whole of the Bennington community is extremely important in a democracy, and it is, it's extremely important for transparency. You'll find in me someone who will do all that he can to increase the number of those important jobs for all people of Bennington, particularly those kind that can support individuals and families, support the activities of the town and the assets of town government, including the rec center, including the parks. You'll find in me someone who approaches every single issue with a sense of professionalism, and who does not treat any citizen of Bennington as unworthy of being heard. I think you'll also find in me someone who honors and encourages the countless numbers of citizens who volunteer their time in towns to the many nonprofits and other organizations that make this town a great place to live in. And finally, you'll find in me someone who will seek to preserve and enhance and use the assets of this town, including all of the assets that you heard about this evening from all of us. And especially wanting them to be utilized by folks here in Bennington who are the taxpayers. And so I ask for your vote, Bruce Lee Clark, and for this time, and then hold me accountable.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to end by saying thank you to all of our candidates for your service, for your time tonight. Thank you to Cat TV for putting this forum together. Please remember to go out and vote on March 5th, and thank you for watching.